Okay. Thank you. Okay, the town to go out and plan in zoning commission, call a meeting to order and roll call. Let's see, you got Jeff.
Yeah.
Al.
Here.
Michael's absent, Steve's away, Lauren.
Michael.
Michael's probably coming soon.
Present.
Okay, and Kevin's away and Clint's not here, so.
Yes.
Yes.
You're it.
We'll get, we'll get to that later, okay, thanks. Okay, so there's no public hearings, no consideration of public hearings tonight. Oh, so we do have a forum anyway. In that, that. All right, here comes Michael.
So.
It's okay. One minute. I like, thanks for coming. Okay, let's, uh.
Have you, have you appointed someone for?
Oh, you're right, you're right. See, I know. Uh, Lauren, would you sit for Steve, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that, because I got it. It's in my brain. Okay, there's no, uh, public hearings, no consideration of public hearings, so, um, let's do the minutes. Are there any corrections to the February twentieth? Not till after we. Yeah.
February twentieth, I had. Questions?
What's, okay.
Uh, and the same thing, but I'm just want to make sure that, uh, Commissioner Goffeers. She was listed as an alternate.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know what the sta- I don't, I just want to make, because.
Yeah, okay.
I'm the guy who signed this thing supposedly, so I just want to make sure that it's whatever she was, and I don't know if a letter was sent to us, because I think that at this meeting, it wasn't clear to us what was going on.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think the direction provided on the twenty-fourth by the town manager was that I was considered a full member but could not participate, and so I part- I did not attend the meeting as a member, I attended the meeting as a member of the public.
That was the instruction that we had. On the twenty, this is the twentieth one.
So on the twentieth, um, I think the same would apply, I was considered a full member.
Yeah, this is the one that was the, uh, this is the CIP, so I went and looked, I just looked at the video that this afternoon and it showed Hal saying, and it was kind of, you are not participating, I believe that's what you said, but I, just if we could just check.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other corrections?
Yeah. I think the, the, under roll, roll call it on a state, who called the meeting to order? Because it, it's not very clear here.
Hmm, do we usually do it?
Well, you really should, because you don't have a.
Right, at that point.
You don't have a chairman.
Yeah. And the way things are in flux.
That was weird one.
Or it should just, if you want to say chairman, but I, I don't care whether it's by.
But we didn't have, so.
Office.
Give it a name, because one of us did.
Okay, anything else?
And then you'd have to say where Kane was appointed secretary and Fitfall was seated as a regular member, it should indicate. Well, you always. For some of those.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, does anybody else have any corrections on that meeting? Hey, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
The twentieth or the twenty-fifth?
Sorry?
Both of them at the same time?
No, just the first.
Just the twenty.
Just the twenty. I'll make a motion for both of them.
Okay.
May have February twentieth.
Second.
Okay, um, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay.
I'm just going to note that Clint Kennedy has just.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening all, sorry I'm late.
Hi Clint. Okay, now let's do the same for the February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five minutes, um, any corrections?
Yeah, so it was just the same thing for me, I just want to make sure that those things are right, because here, or maybe, I don't know if we put, I guess it was written in here that non-participatory.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, but then there was a place in the back where, uh, this is at page seven, where, uh, Commissioner Goffier left the meeting.
Yeah, you probably want to strike that.
Well, you went over to the town council, but then you came back.
Well, both, both as a member of the public, we don't.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine, I just want to make sure that that was, she left the meeting, so anyway, uh.
I mean, you were a commissioner at that point, you just.
At the first.
Apparently we're not allowed to participate, but you were still a regular member, so that's why we noted.
Okay.
That you had left the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that.
You're in the netherworld.
Yeah.
And then.
The reason is, is that while she was gone, Kevin was seated.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
And and then, uh, uh, if, I guess, uh, when, when, uh, Commissioner Sutherland was appointed chair, I'm assuming Zod became secretary.
I always was.
He always was.
Yeah, so you just, okay, okay, so you don't have to say that.
That's right.
Okay, and then, uh.
We didn't need an election.
Here returned and Fifthall returned as an alternate, I guess you don't have to say that, that's fine. Okay, that's all, I just, I was, I wanted to just go through that and make, oh, the other thing is, is that it's got uh, Hal signing as the secretary. Um, that's fine, I don't care, I just, I know, because I mean, it was, that's fine, okay, just want to make sure that it's perfect, just we can make it, because I, I did all those cut, those meetings, Robert's rules. Want to make sure that people take notice, Mike, good members.
So with the other correction?
Yeah, I, I have the same comment on, on the meeting tour.
Yep.
It should say by, by how, and then on page eight, it has Commissioners, uh, seated Commissioner Fitfall is a voting member, should it really say Commissioner or should it say Acting Chair?
Acting Chair, okay.
Acting Chair, and that, it's confusing, because it doesn't say he is removed from that position all the way through, after that, and in the voting for the adjournment, I would think his name should be there, unless he's.
He was. He was not voting at that point, but he was not voting.
Yeah.
Well, where does it say he's voting permissions taken away?
When, when Commissioner Goffier returned.
Well, then it should state here, then seated as a voting member for actually this action or something like that.
Sure.
Or to re.
For the duration of Commissioner Goffier's.
Yeah, but it should say when God, uh, did it say when Goffier returned? Oh, yes, it does, okay.
It's just, you want to be able to follow who's.
It's not, not too obvious who's voting.
Oh, hopefully.
I don't know if anybody ever raised a question, but just in case.
No, it's good to have it.
It could be a legal thing.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, if somebody could make a motion to prove the minutes?
So moved?
In a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any other corrections? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Oppose, nothing, okay, so passes. Um, no public, let's see, public communications, uh, when anyone from the public like to say something to the commission tonight?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Uh, if someone online.
Uh, but not, need to raise their hand if they want.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Okay, and, uh, let's see, special permits, subject.
Going to the ones.
What's that?
The commissions recently.
Oh.
Because I did receive a letter from the town clerk.
Oh, I thought, would, that wouldn't be down in the reported commissions?
No.
Okay.
Usually we do that.
Oh, that's fine.
And staff.
Okay.
Because it, it could affect what's at the.
Well, that's true, okay, that's true in this case, I don't think I've ever seen this case before, but that's good to.
Nobody has. I don't think.
Makes sense, okay. Okay, Jeff, go ahead. You want to read what you got?
Well, it just said, it says, I, I'm back on the commission because of the action that was taken on replacement or, you want to, oh, I can read it.
I would say read it, because.
Reading to the record, yeah.
Dear Mr. Pritchard, please be advised that due to the town council's reconsideration of the motion to appoint a replacement to the planning and zoning commission on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, the result is that you remain on the commission, continuing to serve out your term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, until such time as you are either reappointed or replaced. A little confusing.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for reading that.
I also received the letter. Do you want me to read that into the, the record?
Sure, please.
Uh, also received from the town clerk on March tenth. Um, dear Ms. Goffier, please be advised that due to the town council's reconsideration of the motion to appoint you as a full member on the planning and zoning commission on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, the result is that you will remain an alternate member with the original term expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. I am to, um, I, I suppose chair and the town staff were notified, and I'm to contact you with any questions.
Great, okay, I haven't, I've received notifications of the two.
You have or have not?
I have not, so probably the mail. But the mail's usually pretty fast here, so it shouldn't be long, so we really don't have anything until new business. Okay, new applications?
Right, we have one new application, the text amendment that we talked to Attorney Sweeney about regarding residential development in the IM zone.
Can do, great.
So who, who has that, now just staff?
Well, it's, it, Attorney Sweeney submitted the application.
Right.
So we've just gotten it.
Okay.
No, no.
So we'll set the public hearing.
Yeah. It'll be in the next package, well.
That's why we won't see it till the next.
Okay, and then, uh, next, the multi-unit development in the IM zone. REGA, um, that would be Sweeney's, of course.
That's right.
And then, uh, Roberts Rules and FOIA. Um, I just want to go over this briefly, um, and thanks to all of you for taking the time to sit through this required training, um. As you know, Roberts Rules really ensures a democratic process, because that's what I've always thought, and I think here we have a very experienced, cohesive, mature group, especially sensitive to each applicant, the public input, inter-town staff and each other. So with that in mind, um, I just want to, and if anybody has any comments, feel free, but I just want to go over just a couple of things in there, not much. A lot of sheets, so my apologies. On the iPad, it's just things like that. Um, there was one page about what is a quorum, and I think for us, we basically don't hold a meeting unless there's a quorum, and town staff's very good about to keep everybody notified and make sure people don't come here for nothing. There could be a case where we might not have one after the event, but that hasn't happened to my knowledge, um. And then they were talking about purpose of formality for members, and, um, I don't think we have issues with this, as we do, we're very respectful of each other and town staff, I dare say, um. And then the, the next sheet, I think, is this is where they kind of lay out, um, how you should speak to each other at a meeting, and I know I've read this before, people have different ideas on it, including myself, but, um, I think in this sheet here, we're, we're not guilty of the last bullet calling each other liars or things like that, thank goodness, um, and all of us, I think, want an efficient process, um, to, um, I think, um, this third one is interesting, speak through the chair, never speak directly to another member. I think we do that very well, what I would say, I think, um, would be if you have a new item that's really not in the agenda, and it kind of, the conversation gets off in that direction, instead of either talking directly to town staff or to the town commissioner or something like that, or each other, whatever, we had just, the person can recommend that we put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and then we'll make sure the public gets noticed, so we're going to be covering that topic, you know?
Yep, like, so, like, say something about that, that particular rule, it's that, I think mostly intent of that was very clear that while the meeting is going on, I don't turn to Michael and start having a conversation.
Well, that, yes.
Which is what, had to speak to the chair, because something that we do here, which I think makes this a much more productive meeting, is that once the, uh, the subject has been launched, and say Jeff says something, instead of just saying that to you, he's telling it to us, and so long as it's in orderly way, someone else talks back to Jeff, but it's public.
Right.
So, so long as our comments remain completely public and not close knit between each other, I don't see a problem.
Yes, well, that too, that's a good point.
Well, we're really conducting sort of technical review of things, it's not really under Roberts Rules until we start making motions. And they were set, if you look at Roberts Rules, they're really set up for a large group to discuss something that's already presented. And we work, uh, we're doing a, I mean, workshop almost, really.
I think ours is closer to a workshop, but so long as it's public and not just to each other.
Oh, no, it's always, oh, yes, it's always public. And once we get into debating our motions, then we have to follow Roberts Rules.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's why we don't just talk to each other, I mean, we had some problems with that in the zoning commission, we had to, but that was, wasn't difficult to fix.
Can't text your.
No.
Information is.
But I think the other, the main thing on all of that was really, if something does come up that's absolutely new, um, thinking about something, then yeah, it should go straight on for the next, uh, meeting, you know? Instead of discussing something and somebody's in the audience or isn't in the audience, they had no idea we're going to cover that.
Well, you really can't, that's adding something to.
Yeah, essentially is, but sometimes I think people don't think about that way, because the conversation tends to wander off.
You know, we have gotten into the weeds and Deb is pretty good about pulling aside of them.
So, let's see, next one is debate, um, it's more of the same. Like that's. Oh, just, um, on the FOIA part, I just, I have had to work with a connect at FOIA Commission, and I just think they're extremely knowledgeable and helpful. And of course, let's see, I think that's about it, you all know that, you know FOIA.
If, if I could add, um, I, what stood out to me was, you know, Roberts Rules pervails in the absence of any other rules, so long as they don't countermand statutes or, or what have you, right? Um, I don't think this body necessarily needs its own set of rules, I think, like Sue mentioned, we get along pretty well, um, unless we get into a situation where, um, the way we operate is challenged, and then we would probably want to consider having our own set of rules to fortify current existing practices.
I was hoping it doesn't get to that.
Well, no, we, we, we will get to that, to, after the fact, unfortunately.
Well, a, and that's what I mean, is, do we want to maybe preempt any concerns regarding that, given the new direction coming out about these?
Well.
Trainings?
But for small groups, you don't have to follow Roberts Rules.
How small is a small group?
Under twelve.
Under twelve, okay.
Yeah, it really are.
Yeah, that came up a lot, yeah, so we don't need to second, we don't need the second thing, there's a whole bunch of things.
Well, that's the thing, that also stood out, the seconding of a small group, a second isn't necessary for a motion to, uh, occur.
Right.
That's exactly what they said in that training. Under twelve, no seconds are necessary for a motion on the floor.
If you wanted to, unfortunately, so.
If you want.
Um, we do have some sort of, uh, rules.
You have bylaws.
Bylaw.
Bylaws, right.
No, I asked for them once before, is it possible?
Yep. Baker or.
It does, if you email, because there was just one little thing that I think I wanted to make sure of.
Yep.
Yeah, the word short.
Would you also mind, uh, providing those myself? I, I don't know if they were already in the.
Sounds everyone.
Thanks, yeah, I don't know if they were in the original package you gave us, but.
Yeah, but that's okay.
It's not one of those things that we've ever had an issue with, but if, the question that I had was when someone comes in late and someone else's name, I forget how it, but it does dictate how that happens, and I just want to make sure that we do things correctly, that's all.
Yep.
There was other, in fact, maybe we just want to include, there was another rule that it states in Roberts Rules, and it's a practice that due to the nature of the way we run our business here, doesn't make sense, but I even asked afterwards, and they said, no, you should do it, which was the idea of you state the motion, and then you get discussion, and then you state the motion again. Now, very often, the way we're doing it, we're getting a presentation, we've asked all these questions during the presentation, and then we say, okay, here's the motion, is there any comment? More than half the time, there's no comment, we've already hashed it out, and it's, it could be quite lengthy, and according to the rule, you read it again after the comment period, but I'm thinking, I don't think we need to do that.
Well, we sort of cheat a little bit, and if there are quite concerns before we start voting on the thing, so you don't have to amend it, it's better to get.
Absolutely.
Discussion on.
Absolutely, well, that's why I said, we have actually hashed all that, because we're discussing it as part of the presentation.
Because it's all, we're really doing it as a technical.
Right.
Thing, you, as opposed to say passing the state, a statue or something that's.
Right, and sometimes, so often, it's, it's a technical issue, and just because it's a technical issue.
No, no, I mean, even.
But even then, occasionally we want to insert a comment, that's a change, and we make the change to the motion, that's fine.
Yeah, I think from, I, I took from that when they were talking about, I mean, your question, because I, uh, was that they just, they wanted to make sure that, that everybody understands what the motion is.
Right.
Right, so that it's, that's why they were repeating.
And, and I, and I got that, but sometimes you say the motion, I'd say half.
It's almost like you have to say the motion and then repeat.
And then exactly repeat it again, okay?
No, but I think the really good thing that you do, Jeff, that I, I learned from this is that the applicant, you ask them if they've seen the motion, right, and you ask everybody if they've seen the motion, since we get it early. So, it's not like.
Also, are, many of our motions are.
No, if you're, if you're just here constructing a motion, sometimes it's hard to remember, you know, when you get the.
Oh, that's different.
But it's to have one ready, and you ask the.
If you're constructing it.
Oh, yeah, we've had Jeff read lengthy ones over again, and it's.
Yeah, because that can be very confusing.
Yeah, I think it works well.
Okay.
That was all I had on that. Get ready for the CN zone? Um, let's see, review of the CN zone uses and conditions. Um, and this came about basically due to comments from the public, or what was the source of, uh, us looking at this again?
So, so Michael suggested it, I believe, um, and, and I think it, it came from a concern, um, from some folks in the public who were concerned about uses that were adjacent to their neighborhood.
Right.
So, what I've included in your packet is, um, is the bulk density, which also is the, the purpose of the CN zone, um, as well as the table, okay? Um, I'll just note that the table, you know, has a column for CN, has a P, a C, or an A, again, uh, next to a number of different, um, uses. If there's a C, it means there are conditions, and the conditions can be found on the far right.
Right.
Um, I did not print out all, or put in your packet all of the conditions, so I'm hoping you have your regulations up if you want to review the conditions that go along with each of these uses.
And was it only the gas station one where the public was really complaining, because, I mean, I understand their houses, you know, it wasn't conceived necessarily, it was going to be like that, I get all that.
Yep, um, another thing to consider where the CM zones are, okay, you know, I know the concerns that we heard were mostly along Long Hill, but there are other areas of CN. Um, I have a zoning map, if you all don't have one. You can put up.
It's, uh. I thought this was, um, this was interesting, because I, over the course of a week, I was driving up, uh, Long Hill, and you go from the CN zones, uh, into this kind of a mishmash of things. And I almost wonder if we shouldn't, and this is not on the agenda, I'm not suggesting you talk about, but also think about it going up and tell them where the next CN zone is.
Right, so, so the CN zones, as you can see from the zoning map on the screen, again, they're Long Hill. Um, there's another node up by Crystal Lake Road and Route twelve near the Navy Base.
Yep.
Um, there's another one on Plonik Road down near Kolmaske School. Um, there are three along Route one eighty-four, a very small one that is across the street from Buddington Road intersection. Um, there is one at Colonel Ledgerd Highway and Route one eighty-four.
Hmm.
Um, and then there's another one at Wells Road and Route one eighty-four.
Right.
Um, but sorry, there's yet another one right on the Stonington border. Uh, very small, CN, Route twenty-seven and, um, and Route one eighty-four, so, so as we're talking through these uses, remember that it's all of those zones that we're talking about, not just necessarily Long Hill.
Right.
Is a real problem just along Long Hill, is it really, oh, that, is, is that really truly?
But that's where, I think that's where concern was.
That's where all the concern seems to be, because you're changing it from, maybe you mixed use to more commercial. Commercial ones.
It, sure, it's possible, I mean, change is hard, right, I, I, you know, I mean, change is hard.
Yeah, where the other ones may not see that same thing, so.
Or they may not have seen the change yet.
Right.
Well, and also the high, if you look at it, it's the highway, you've got a four-lane road along hill, the others are more two-lane roads.
That's true.
I think for me, and what, when we were doing the, uh, uh, this gas station, which was just new now by Sunnyside.
Park.
Park, and it was at the very end, and everything was all done, and then someone asked, I think it was Hal asked, what are your hours operation, and they said twenty-four hours a day, and that's when, I, I think I heard a slight gas from Hal. And I, I sort of thought the same thing, is that that twenty-four hours a day with, you know, and if it's a car wash or a, um, you know, gas station, and that doesn't seem um, a hundred percent compatible next to residential. That part of it, so I don't think that we can limit the hours of the day that a business like that operates.
I know we did in downtown Mystic.
Right, because you were dealing with special permits at that point, so maybe that is something to think about, are some of these uses that are adjacent to residentially zoned properties ones that you want to consider as a special permit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And site plan.
Or. Or do you have more buffering between?
That's.
Well, that was the other thing that I wrote here, was the fifty-foot, um, rear yard.
Yeah.
That maybe that, you know, because it's the rear yard that.
Or, or the yard that's adjacent to the residentially zoned property.
I, I, I think that the devil's in the details for that one, because that one, in fact, we're talking about the pumps being on the route one side, completely shielded from the residential as it is, just because of the, the layout that it had. So in fact, just for that particular one, you can actually screen them a hundred percent. They will, they will hear less traffic than they would in that particular one, so that actually came out completely appropriate, regardless of the hours, unless somebody goes around the back.
But, um, we couldn't just pick out some uses, wouldn't that be considered discriminatory?
A, again, um, right, so what you want to think about are, you know, whether or not increased buffers are appropriate for all of the uses that are allowed in the CN, or are there some uses in the CN you want to consider under a special permit application? And have conditions associated with that, that may include orders of operation.
Are there a lot of uses that don't require a special permit?
Um, a lot of them do not, that's correct.
Right. Because I think if we, if we play around with a buffer. Cause I think if we, if we play around with a buffer, then you're really hurting businesses that wanna. Go in these areas that are supposed to be, have businesses amongst other.
Well, and some of these are pretty small to begin with, you know, and then you. And, and I think that when I look at it, I think maybe you'd want to have that. On Long Hill Road, little, because it's a real established neighborhood behind it, but that in other places, I mean, you'd have to look at them. Individually and, and sort of see if those neighborhoods that surround those other CNs need a little more, um, protection.
In fact, I'm looking at what we've got on there on Gold Star, starting from the farthest most and those are. Have residences right, right nearby. Each, each one actually that there's actually residences right nearby each one, with the one exception of this little quirky one, which is the end of Buddington. Which is probably like a leftover. Cause it's just, we're shielding it from the conservation areas and which is nice to do, but I.
No, it was, um, the CN zone, um. That actually came before 2019. Um, the CN zones that you see on the current map were either CA. Or yeah, CA 12 or CA 15, which was a lighter commercial. Or office multifamily, OMF. And I think that one was an OMF. Um, one of the goals of that project in 2019 was to reduce the number of goal of zones, cause we had a lot.
At least it's only 19 now.
And when it says veterinary services, does that mean like you could have a kennel type thing?
No, I think that's.
Yeah, kennel.
I mean, or is that like an animal hospital?
No, it's right. It's like a literally a veterinary. They may have animals in there overnight, but they're inside.
Thanks. I just couldn't move.
See, I was going through and looking at businesses that typically don't run. It was the 24 hours a day. And I think that what Hal points out is valid is that especially up. In the Northeast, I don't think that people up there would be expecting. Something running, I mean, you're in a very kind of a rural area and then you're really not expecting. 24 hour a day operation. I don't know if that would work up there. You know, but that anyone would even want to have 24 hours a day, but I think that. Should be. I don't know. I.
I'd like to need to look at this, they tightened up a little bit. Yeah. What, what the requirements are there? And I say that just because. Here we have, might have had the worst case scenario, having a convenience store and a gas station open 24 hours with houses right behind it.
Well, they're really close.
They're really close. And I don't think those people even know anything's going on because of the way that building is constructed. It's just a wall behind them. There's nothing but on the backside, there's nothing. The gas, the pumps and the convenience store are entered from the front with a 30 year, 30 feet. Behind the store. I don't think they'd be aware of anything going on at the store.
Hmm, and the elevation change.
And there's an elevation change. So everything is working. So.
Is this, are you, are you, uh?
The new one on Route.
But yeah, not the car wash.
Not the car wash.
Okay.
Not the car wash, right. So that one, I, I, I'd see as the car wash, different story perhaps, but they, that one that we're really concerned with. It, it can be done. So maybe whatever works for that is what we want to look at, be able to say. It's an architectural feature, unfortunately, just happened to be the architectural feature. If they had had the pump sticking out one side or the other, like one of their original things, it wouldn't have worked. But what they proposed to us, yeah, turned out to be fine and. It's a. I don't want to stop anything like that. The building is a great buffer.
Well, there's, there's like hotel motels or okay, or rooming boarding houses, things like that.
Yeah.
It's a kind of question, what's going to be the noisiest or biggest problem to residential people?
Yeah. And then, um, so then one other little thing that I was kinda, I don't, cause I, I wasn't involved in the zoning part when you, when this was all being done, but. When there's a. Drive through. It seems like there's a distinction between. Um, because we did the, we did the drive through for the coffee shop. On the opposite corner of the car wash.
Right.
But then, I mean, I don't know how a car wash isn't considered a drive through. It's providing a service and you're driving through the building.
Well.
No, I don't, I'm just, I'm, no, there was just, yeah, I mean, that's, that could be, but it's just, uh, it seemed like there was. Like I didn't quite understand. And there were a number of different drive throughs. Some of them are special permit, some of them are.
Right. I think, I think a drive through, you're going to hear someone placing an order. Right? And getting a confirmation over a microphone, which you would not in a, in a. When you're pumping gas necessarily.
Yeah.
Um. So I think, I think that's.
But how about a, uh, what did it call, what the, uh, car wash? That's, that's the allowable use or is that a?
Yeah.
In the CN zone, yes. Yes, it's under, um, vehicle washing facility.
And that's an allowable use.
It's a conditioned use. Right. So there are conditions associated with it.
Yeah. I just don't, I, I guess I thought of it at, because I. I'll admit, I don't get my car washed, but so I don't know how they work. But when you come up to the thing, imagining you're like talking through a microphone or something and.
No, I think so.
It's like a vending machine.
Or like an ATM, almost you just put your card, you put your credit card in there, you choose what you want and then keep driving through.
All right.
And overwhelmingly now they're subscription. So you actually have an account and you.
Oh, just wait your plate or something like that. Okay. So I mean, I just, I was thinking out, it seems like it's providing a service. You're driving through to drive through. But, um.
Well, there is one near a restaurant fast food, which is permitted in the CN.
For the drive-throughs, yeah.
By special permit.
By special permit. Yeah. If you remember.
It just had a P, I thought.
Um, drive through facility for restaurant is accessory, special permit and conditional.
Yep.
So it'd be like the.
No, the one under restaurant, restaurant, fast food.
Restaurant, fast food, right. But if you want a drive through associated with the restaurant.
Oh, I see what you mean up there. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah. I was just looking at the one, of course, below it.
So is the distinction between it primarily being a drive through and an accessory use, whether or not folks can go inside and sit down and take an order?
Right. It has to be accessory. It cannot be only a drive through restaurant.
Do we have any drive through only restaurants?
Not anymore.
Not anymore. They're most of the ones I can think of are accessible uses.
Not yet.
Photo that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, Ju Sushi used to be.
Dunkin' Donuts.
Ju Sushi used to be.
That's right.
Dunkin' Donuts on Route 12 is now only.
That's only.
That's also true. Yes.
That's true.
The one next to Flanagan.
Across from the other car wash.
They, um, they got a car through their front and when they renovated, they went to drive through only.
Oh, interesting. Yeah.
Um, workers are still inside and they'll walk. Your, your order out to your car or to a window, but, um.
Just a side window.
Yeah, there's a side window you can walk up.
Permitted that here, that they changed, the driveway was always there and we put a window on the, we put a window on the side. But there's nothing behind it.
So we want to do things like more landscaping or I mean.
Or do you want to go through these uses and see whether or not you're comfortable with these uses in the CN?
I don't know.
We're kind of all, yeah.
Yeah, I know. A lot of different directions. I, I don't have any problem personally with the. What's in there. I mean, we did the zoning re rewrite and everything like that, but. To me, it's always, the problem is you really have older neighborhoods and now they're getting, you know, things are knocked down. The forest is knocked down. It's their, the buffers to some extent. And they're a block away all of a sudden from Route, the Route there.
I, I think what's interesting to me is that the primary zone we're thinking of along. Route 12 or Long Hill is very different than all of the smaller ones that Deb pointed out, um, Crystal Lake, Buddington. Uh, out on the border with Stonington. Those are significantly different in terms of feel and use and. Um, uh, uh, like as far as the Buddington one goes, if it's at the end that I'm thinking of, there's no residential over there. It's a.
That's a quirk. That was, that was.
Right? Isn't that strange? And would it be more appropriately, um, zoned in a different way? For different uses, um.
So I've been here long enough that I remember, um, that was actually proposed at one point and those property owners were adamantly opposed to changing the zone to something other than what was. Considered commercial.
Well, I, I, I'm fine with it being commercial, but expanding it forward. I, I mean, I'm thinking about that property in general. There's right across, there's the Transformers, right? The little electrical yard there. Um. But I. No, nothing else can really. Go there.
Thing there is.
Unless, I mean, I know there's right up just. And I don't know if it's included in the CNM. There is. Uh. Land that's been up for sale for quite a while. It's quite hilled. So I don't think they're getting any takers, but, um. I don't know. If any of this would prohibit or, or make it more difficult for someone to try to put a multifamily. Development there, because that would probably be a decent use that wouldn't get too much pushback.
That's allowed, Miss Y.
And that's, and that's allowed.
Yeah, it's allowed.
But is it permitted by rights? I mean.
And is there sewer there?
Is, there should be.
Um, probably just stops there. Um, they might have to extend it a little bit, but it's very, very close if it's not in front of there.
So what do you want to do with all this?
So how much of this, um, is being considered? By the consultants?
Not at all.
Not at all.
I wonder if we need to step back and just look at the conditions because the conditions are the magic.
They, they, they could be. I mean, if the use is so onerous, well, then that's easy.
Right.
Okay, but.
Doesn't seem to be.
It's conditions and it's whether or not you want to impose. Conditions beyond that before landing a particular use there. Do you want to do it by special permit? On, under certain circumstances.
Okay.
So we should look at Emily for a change there to special permit at least.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Possible. And then I, I guess think about the buffer. Is there anything else we can do? Cause there's only, things are where they are, but.
And I would caution about, you brought up and. Very often we hear it is that, oh no, we'll have a row of arborvitae there.
Exactly.
And the answer is, okay, fine, but remember that that's acoustically transparent.
Yes.
It's like not having anything. You just can't see it. So not until you get 50 feet of dense foliage, do you get any noticeable things? So. You need something solid.
Yeah.
Can we talk about this more next meeting as well?
Sure.
Yeah, might be. I had, yeah, I was going to just go through the list like what you, but we don't have to do it now.
Right.
Do that. And then. We can just put the table actually up or holding ranks because you can go easily to the conditions, you know, just by.
That'd be good.
Okay, good.
And you can do that if you call it up on your computer.
We'll do.
It's pretty easy. Okay, we can do.
Okay, very good.
Um, and I'm going to say that conditionally, if we have a whole lot of applications. We're not, we'll push it on.
Like it's original.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, next. Is the, um, let's see, commission appointment process. Uh, town attorney opinion discussion. And I think you all have looked at the, uh. The, um. Piece that's in our package here, um. And I. I guess, I guess the way that we should respond to this is, um. We have the background, of course. Um, which is involving, uh, Lauren Gotti. And. Of course, Council Board Law, yes, I heard that talking about, uh, getting a written, uh, opinion, um. And. Then what we think we should do. And I guess in this case, um, I'd appreciate knowing what each of you think of this request. I have my own opinions about the getting a, um, opinion on everything that's happened. And maybe, maybe it's even more than getting a legal opinion. There's other things that might weigh in too from the state. I don't, I'm not an expert, but a lawyer would know. But, um. So if anybody's interested in seeing how they want to respond to this particular memo.
Well, you're really looking at the five versus the 15,000. Expense.
No.
That, that was at the council.
Yeah, that wasn't the council, the expense. Let's, let's put the expense aside because nobody knows what the expense is going to be.
No, no, I.
I think even.
No, I mean, is that really the issue?
No. It, it may be to some people on the council, um, but I, I say for our purposes, since we don't know what the number is anyway. Let us say, all things being equal, uh, if you were to get, what, what do you think? Uh, what's your thoughts on this sort of thing?
Just to clarify, so that the question here is. Do, does this commission want to ask the town council to, to ask for an opinion? Because clearly you all don't have anything to. You have no authority over whether or not someone was. Appointed properly, right? You know, your, your. Your power comes from statute. Eight twenty-three, eight twenty-four. Nothing in there that says you all get to decide whether or not one of your members was done properly. So. Really the only question is here is, do you want to ask the town council to ask for an opinion?
Why do we have to ask the town council to ask for opinion? Doesn't this commission ask for its own opinions?
It, it does, uh, for things that are under their jurisdiction. This is just not.
Is there anywhere that says it has to be discreetly under the jurisdiction? Because it does.
And I believe the request actually was to the commission to ask for town council.
Yeah, that would be the appropriate way to do it.
For the, yeah.
Yeah, town council, because I just thought, we got a HR department here, thank goodness. But it's a. But it, to me, it's more than he was just. Um, gain an opinion. I mean, you could expand on that if you want, but does anyone have any? I have some thoughts, but like everybody else's first.
I think the.
But this, the town charter talks. About this. It says the town attorney may render legal opinions concerning any legal question affecting the town directly. To the council upon his, her authority as a legal officer of the town or at the request of any counselor, moderator of the RTM. Town manager, town clerk, chairperson of any ABC. Including the chairperson of the. Board of Ed and the superintendent of schools. He shall furnish them with an attorney. Within an opinion upon any question of law affecting the town or garden or the respective powers and duties which opinion. Shall, if requested, be in writing.
Hmm, for the powers and duties.
Or.
So that, I think that the top, the, the chairman of ABC can request the town attorney. But I don't know if that's just. A verbal opinion. Or if it's one of those legal decisions where they go off. To research and. Other cases and court cases and stuff.
But is that asking, cause we do ask for an attorney's opinion occasionally, but it has to do with our business. Not, not personnel and appointments.
The, the reading is anything that affects the town or their powers or duties.
Just a second, one at a time. Okay, thanks.
And I frankly. Okay. I would, I would, I would go for, we should be asking for stuff that's in our purview to ask. That's just kind of my opinion on it. Though the place where they give an opinion that we were uncomfortable with. Was even though that's all we had, that's what we acted on because that's all we had. But what we'd like to have seen, as it was mentioned, was that here's my opinion based on this line inverse. For any code search, here's my world, for any code search that you would do. And you get an opinion from someone from an inspector and he says, based on this particular line inverse, here's what I think that means. And so anything short of that isn't much of an opinion. It's like a, a suggestion.
Because I said so.
Oh, please, just. Let's keep it up, um. Okay, yeah, that's good. Anybody else want to say?
I would, I would say. When you ask for these types of opinions and all of the, the many, many legal opinions I've had to ask for. You have to be specific about the question asked in order to get the answer that's most use usable, right? Or, or informative. And so I think that the specific question here. Um, you know, no one's challenging the town councils. Purview to a point or the town personnel appointments commission. The real concern really comes with this deviation that their practices are showing between the written word of the policy. And the actions of. The personnel appointments commission, right? And that's, I think the concern is specifically about, you know, they, they've said verbally, this is the way we're doing things. But because it's different than what's discreetly written in the policy. People, people are confused and, and that's where the question I had came from, which is if we're not following the policy to the letter, is it still a legitimate appointment? And I view this in the context of the case law that I had mentioned to the town attorney and, uh, which my attorney shared with me and I'm happy to share with, with you all, um, fairly recent, um. And illegally formed, i- if a court holds that the commission's illegally formed. All the decisions that were made are null and void. They're challengeable. And, and my, my goal in making sure that we are. Very line inverse, as Hal said, clear on, on the appointment process is that. I would hate to see the town plunged into lawsuits overturning decisions by this commission. I mean, that's a lot of time and energy and money, especially. I mean, that's a lot of time and energy and money, especially if we were to get sued and and not just by developers who didn't win the development or didn't like which decisions we rendered, but also by residents who don't like the decisions we're rendering. And if they, we already heard a lot of residents come out with with questions and concerns about how the appointments were handled, why give them that that firepower potentially by not just quoting line and verse that this was all duly followed, right? I'm trying to protect the town uh, from these lawsuits, you know?
In a nutshell, what are you recommending?
It, you know, it's cited opinion. Um, formal, verbal, whatever, however you want. Advisory, I think is actually the word, an advisory opinion related to current practices of the appointment committee in the town council to ensure that you know, we we don't get sued.
Okay, and that's by the town attorney.
Town attorney, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's an advisory opinion and it does affect our our powers and duties, right? Insofar as I mean, what did it cause for us those past two meetings?
That's good. Anybody else? Jeff, do you have some more anyone? Or Michael?
No, I I'm uh I mean, I I'm good.
Okay, I guess um, I would just say um, and it's not meant negative towards any party involved in these things. But I had an awful lot of experience with lawyers and legal uh, firms and lawsuits and cases in my career in finance. That's just since you're always talking about lawyers. We had our own attorneys and all that stuff, and sometimes the other party had their attorneys. But I think in a case like this, I would just I think it would do everyone maybe some good to actually use an outside attorney. Um, that's just my personal experience because for us, it was always a case whoever was paying the bills of the attorney, it just would guide the opinion because the law is not a always black and white and there's interpretations and everything. And I understand this case, we're talking about not following um, what their procedures were. Because when I look at my reappointment process years ago, um, I was interviewed, you know, and everybody was interviewed. That was just how it went. That you knew, you knew it was gonna happen. You prepared for your interview, everybody did. And you got to talk with uh, the parties and the um personnel and appointments committee, I mean. I, why though? I think, I think a lot of things were needed too, maybe a little more Roberts rules or other training because um, it's on the record that you had the chair of the committee um, saying before the vote who who we favored, who we recommended. And I think that fortunately never happened to me where I had to hear Spales's name recommended or something like that. But it was just like, I think we need a, I think a better, cleaner process following um, the rules of being and everything. And I don't, I know it's gonna be difficult for anyone to stomach using outside attorney, I understand that. But um certainly to have a legal opinion that really has some, you know, backup in the law to it would be very helpful. And in view of how things went, so that's, those are my two cents. I got sure that helps uh, give a response to the town council. Um, it's really a question, um, maybe we should, we should say, do we think we should ask the town council to get a legal opinion uh, based on case law, et cetera, et cetera.
Is it case law or we're just saying focus on the actual practices, which we did not.
I think it's both. Yeah, if they need case law, bring that.
Yeah, that's true, but yeah.
I disagree that we need to ask the council to ask for the opinion. I think we have the authority by what Jeff cited straight out of the charter to ask for it. And I would cite the charter when we ask for that.
But um, does anyone else?
But outside attorney, I have a question. What's our purview to to ask for an outside attorney?
Probably you can ask for anything. But I'm, that's what I'm saying. I I don't know if realistic or not. Um, I understand that. But that's just my personal experience in a different environment.
I don't know how the commission actually gets to ask the town attorneys for action. I mean, it's always been verbal. But if you do case laws reviews, then you may find out that get from a legal standpoint, there are cases that settle some of these.
That's right.
And the other, the other item that is concerning is normally if on the town council, if there any, any discussions that have to or deviate from their rule, their rules, they always have to take a vote on overriding their rules. In this case, in their recent cases with appointments, they just gone off and not follow the rules at all, not having their two thirds vote to say we can override. What we say is how the business is supposed to be. You know, it's, there's not right, but I don't know what you can do in that. And there there's also a part in the town charter that talks about the town councils should support or is required to support A, B, C and Cs and not worry about their decision making. And I think they're doing it the opposite. They're concerned with decision making and they're not supporting A and Cs. Because they're not following the a realistic process for reviewing candidates for positions. I don't know what to do with it.
Well, does everyone wanna ask them for a legal opinion based on what has happened, their charter, case law, whatever?
Well, that would be just do that, I don't know who.
Do you wanna see whether Clint has any comments?
Oh, sure. You know, because I don't see his name.
Yeah, it's right here.
It's okay. I'm not taking it personally. No, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay.
I think that Lauren's uh, issues that have hurt concerns are valid and I mean, any body who doesn't like what we do, you know, it's a chink in our armor that uh will be exploited. And I think that we need to make sure that I don't know what seems like something that.
You mean, if someone decides that, oh, our decisions were invalid because we were appointed incorrectly. And maybe, honestly, maybe, maybe so. But it's possible that maybe we need opinion on that because we are operating in good faith. That's a big one. So I I I've never heard of things being overturned. Then so that's one to go to case law. Are we at risk? If there is something like that, and if the answer is you are not at risk, we operate in good faith, then we can take that off the table as being, that's not an issue. So it might be simpler than we're thinking.
Well, it's good faith or maybe ill advised would be the other
Well.
Well, consideration or.
Well, I guess.
Now, we're talking about our decisions.
Maybe we were, oh, okay.
Or or our decision's valid because be based on the makeup of who we had, and we operate in good faith, then they're valid.
Even with a commissioner that was a member of the public.
And follow direction once direction was given.
That's right.
Now, look, if I can just, I guess, recommend at this point, maybe would staff mind summarizing?
Oh, I'd rather not. I'd rather not. I I mean, staff does not get involved in any of the appointments.
I mean, just to the point of if you have a record, maybe I just need to hear. That's that's really what I remember. I don't expect you to imply. But, okay. Yeah, you agree, everybody agree with that?
Um, so so your action is to review it and um, discuss again next meeting?
Yeah, I think why don't, if we want to draft kind of something, you know, just the basic four points of what we think we're doing. And then we'll see if we all agrees at next time. So if we get that in the C N zone done.
Yeah, we'll definitely put this on C N. We'll see what else we have.
Uh, would it be easiest for me to send um the document from the the case document to you to distribute out?
That'd be great. Okay. Ready for the next?
More fun?
Tell the story then again. Oh, referrals before that.
Right, it's just the the story.
Um, does anyone have any concerns or comments? Anybody, any comments?
No, no comment.
Okay, no comments then. And we get the reported chair. Okay. I did have a uh, I did ask Deb actually to meet, um, and we did to talk about the P O C D status. And um and what was going on, you know, because the timelines, um it shows us starting to get busier. But um, maybe you could give us all just an update for, because we'd love to hear that.
So um, the consultant has finished um, reviewing all of the documents that we've given them. Um, he has produced a baseline report um, of where we are right now. Town staff has reviewed that and we have just gotten the revisions back. Um, so I expect this commission will be meeting as the um, steering committee probably early April. So we will hold you all for that. Um, you will get a presentation of where we are, the results of the survey um, and a discussion of focus groups um, that will, where we will be having discussions where we will expect at least one, no more than two, planning and zoning commissioners to sit in to listen to the the discussion, led by Horace Lee Witten. Uh, up until this point, um, Horace Lee Witten has actually been in contact and had um, interviews with about thirty different groups that uh, John or I or John and I have sat in on and not participated, but just listened to like sort of a guided discussion of of where these groups will, they, where they need support from the town, um, where they see their organization going in the next ten years. And so from that, we're gonna, there's still those folks down into focus groups. Um, and you guys will get to hear it as well. So April, April will get busy.
Is there any reason why only one or two extra commissioners? Uh, but if you have two plus uh, somebody there.
I mean, I mean, one or two planning commissioners. That's that planning and zoning commissioners, I mean.
The rest could listen via Zoom or something, or you guys.
You know, we we talked about that, whether they should be recorded and and we're we came to the conclusion they should not. Um, people are less inclined to really speak frankly. We will have a note taker. Of course, Lee Witten will provide a note taker. We'll have detailed notes. Um, and and again, this is just to inform a draft of the P O C D.
Well, let me ask the commissioner, I mean, you want, you are recording, you want a summary?
Could we stream it without recording?
Um, I'll ask. A- again, I mean, we wanna make it very comfortable for them who are talking to.
And there's no way to participate as a member of the public?
Couldn't watch it afterward.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Some of the conversations that that we've listened in, you know, people are telling stories about their minds. I, it's just.
But these are meetings really conducted by the the vendor there. It's not a town.
Right, it's not, no, no, it's not a, it's it's a focus group run by the consultant.
So you don't have to record that or.
Right, and in the past, planning and zoning commissioners have not sat in on those. Frankly, neither staff, we've just gotten notes from the discussions.
Oh, just with the um, or whoever it was.
I think Horace Lee Witten's going to be neutral enough so that we shouldn't really have a concern.
Is the the public input portion of this, um, I don't wanna say done, but kind of.
Survey, the initial survey is done.
All right, all right. It it's Horace Lee Witten still um, soliciting feedback from the public?
At this point.
No, okay, because I know we we never got a chance to have you guys come out to uh, the Cubs and.
But that's, that's another problem. I mean, we will have, we're still gonna be looking for input, just not with that particular survey.
Sure.
So that list of um groups that were interested in attending this that was generated by staff?
By staff and and, yeah, by staff.
Uh, question, um, on the project schedule here, there's um I guess a community report would be a big thing to get.
And again, the steering committee is going to be open. The the meeting that you're gonna hold us, the steering committee is gonna be open to the public. It will be recorded.
But is that the community report?
No, it's not. It's not, it's not a public meeting like we had for the kickoff.
Well, what is a community report then?
I mean, basically, it will be what they are presenting to you after they get your feedback on it. At that point, they will present it to the public and want to figure out a a good place to do that rather than next door.
Because that was, that was due in February, I think. So they're a little behind. And then vision and goals document, I think is in this month.
We don't have that yet.
Any E T A on that one?
No, because they they wanna talk to you first about what they've done so far.
So it might be.
They don't wanna jump ahead of it.
April. Maybe.
So when we did the last P O C D, there was like a work, a working group? Are we gonna do that again or is it gonna be different?
There was a steering committee made up of different commissioners.
Commissioners even public.
No, not public. Frankly, you all decided that wasn't a really good way to go about it. We wanted to be the steering committee. Um, I think I think the draft that the planning commission got was not at all what they expected and the consultant had to do a major revision. So this way, you will all act as the steering committee and then give them input as we go along. So at least you get a document that you want.
Why don't we try to um, maybe catch up uh, through April and May, so by the end of May, we can hit back on the uh, project timeline there. I think that'd be a good goal and I'm sure we're happy to do whatever we need to do to help that happen. So anybody else have any other comments on it? All right, thanks for the update on that.
What's the um deadline to sort of do or it's ten years from?
It has to be done by the end of June twenty twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a whole project plan here. Because it's really, it's a big project, detailed, complicated, for sure. Let's see, the second thing um, I wanted to just report on, I think, having listened to a lot of town council meetings and and other meetings, um, I think it would make sense to have a a different item, a new item on the agenda for next time, and that would be the election of chair. Does everybody agree with that? Because I think we had a situation here where someone was chair, it was kind of all of a sudden, then they were terminated, even they were noticed early. Um, it was terminated. And then, once again, um just by unique set of events. Now they're back on the commission and I kind of feel like it's not fair to not have included that person in when we were voting. Okay, that's a, if everybody agrees with that, I think it'd be simple thing to add to the agenda. It won't take long.
Will Kevin and uh be here? Will our two missing characters be here?
I don't know.
If we don't have a full house, then I would.
Yeah, that's fine. That's good. Okay, very good. And then the third thing is, um, I attended a Avalonia Groton Town uh, committee meeting. And because they were interested in the property going in on Gold Star next to the Leo Antonio Preserve. So
We we need to talk about that. Well, we have an application.
Yeah.
You need to think about whether or not you can sit for that application.
Oh, right. Oh, no, that's okay. That's not a problem. If I wanted you to know that I did, I did that, yes. No, but even though I don't have any, I'm not gonna have any financial benefit out of this or other thing, um, I wouldn't mind recusing myself, that's fine. I did a promo for COVID. And nothing to benefit. It's just good to be completely above board, so. But um anyway, so that was it. Um, with uh, let's say, report of commission?
A couple of months ago, I thought there was some discussion that uh the commission was gonna have a letter to send to the council. On short term.
It's on there tonight.
It is?
I just wonder if anything got down on that.
It's on there, I've no idea. It's on there. I have no idea what they're discussing, but it's on their agenda.
What, what is this?
Uh uh short term rentals.
Oh, okay. No, I saw that at that last meeting that that was discussed.
Okay, nothing else? I'm reporter staff.
Okay, sorry, I gotta get back to me.
Oh, that's okay.
Um let's see, we're, okay, so um. Michael Kane had asked about the status of the sidewalk agreements for two properties along Allen Street. Um Mystic River Ambulance and then Precious Memories, which also fronts on Sandy, actually both of them front on Sandy Hollow Road as well as Allen Street. Um so in your packet, um are copies of the sidewalk agreements, um and then a a status report on the D O T project. Um for exit eighty nine. That project um envisions actually installing the sidewalks that these two properties are are bound to install. If you so choose to have them do it. Um that is the the. So the design should be done this year, construction will be next year and something that just came up today. We're gonna be having with a meeting with D O T early next month about the project to get a a real opinion on where they are, so. At this point, I would suggest you not ask these folks.
Oh, no, no, no. I just wanted to, you know, cause it was, I I keep a note on my bulletin board and it was five years, so I figured I'd.
So that's where we are with that.
Well, that's good.
So they're putting in both sidewalks. And they go from like, for example, the um ambulance one goes from the current sidewalk to the corner.
Correct.
That's basically it. And one across the street is the south side of Sandy Hollow.
I believe.
So people have some safety zone to jump off. Okay, good. Those are the two I thought were.
Are we going to have a a preliminary version of that design or have this great? I have this great fear that we'll get a complete design and say, oh, no, we really wish you weren't doing that and say, well, it's too late.
When they do things like that, are there comment periods?
I don't.
Like, do they have public area?
I'll be honest, I don't know.
I think necessarily, and that's real issue.
Yeah, they may consider this a small project. I don't know.
Yeah.
And I have this great fear that they'll make things so much better for us that it will be worse. Twenty-three hours a day.
So that's a great point, you know, really. So, thank you. Okay, next, building height article. Uh thanks for.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, that was uh dense.
You asked for.
I put it up there with reading James Joyce.
You know, it reminded me of my economics class. I have a lot of economics.
No, I thought it was interesting.
Oh, no.
Very informative.
Fascinating, thank you. And there was, there's a lot of similar articles with all, it's hugely, uh I don't know. Data driven and formulas and all sorts of stuff. It's amazing.
Some of the things in there uh seem like they kind of made. But I don't know how they all apply to us, because you're using the fifty largest metropolitan areas, right?
Yeah, that one.
But I I found it interesting is it never even occurred to me is that those points of. You know, the four floors, the eight floors and the twelve floors and how the prices just go up, but. The other thing is that I don't know. How many uh builders are reading this? But uh, you know, I don't know, or if we or. How everyone applies to what goes on here, but. Um doesn't make it any, I mean, I. I don't, are we considering like raising? I know that there was some conversation at some point about maybe. Toy in with that height.
No, that's true, but I I thought Bill Sweeney had a really good answer to a lot of that, quite honestly.
Can we cut, can we talk about this now? A little bit?
Talking about the article, right?
And I just think that's his perspective, and that was very similar in a lot of ways, even though it wasn't, you know.
Yeah.
It's his experience, which seemed to support a lot of the data ones, this one and other ones I saw on mine. It just seems to be there's a.
But hi- his comments, I think at the time for that project were, I mean, that was a three story, wasn't it? I didn't pay a lot of it. This is the one down on Pleasant Valley Road North and Crystal Lake, and that wasn't Bill Sweeney.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, so they had suggested at that one that, you know, you might wanna think about having taller buildings. But they were already at three.
Right.
So it's the floors where they say that makes it more expensive, cause then you're going to steel and elevators.
I think it's above.
I thought five was the max before you had to use steel.
Three story you could use.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think that maybe it's something that we should think about a little bit and cause there's probably places where it might be. More acceptable to have a little taller buildings in your downtown area, maybe.
It it is low down there.
Yeah, six, yeah. And then uh. See, see, but then that number doesn't mesh with this, right? Because.
This isn't gospel.
No, I, but I mean, if somebody, I mean, if we are.
I can just start.
You know, because what they were saying is that you get that jump at. Five and then it's then up to eight.
Three to four.
Yeah.
Was a big jump and then from seven to eight was that secondary jump and then whatever twelve, I don't really.
Yeah, well, then then you're talking about, you know, three, what do they say, three hundred feet per second or minute or something else. See, I did read it. Anyway.
You're talking about Stanford, then there's.
Yeah, and I don't know if then, because they were also talking about the cost of the land, right? And I don't know if our land, I mean, there's a need here and your rents might be able to um pay for those. Uh kinds of buildings, but I don't know if the land costs here.
Wow.
Would dictate it and then.
Well, I think what's interesting in Stanford too is the fact some really tall apartments, but not twenty stories, maybe eight. I was right next to the railroad.
Yeah, well, it's right next to the railroad track, but that might be something that, you know, if we ever do get a railroad station, that's the kind of construction. That's right. Want in that area, right?
Yep, and there may be other.
Maximize the.
State grants or whatever and that sort of thing to this product complicated deal. But, yeah.
Because because we kind of went back and forth on it, do you know offhand what it is for um how many floors before you start needing steel reinforcement?
Yeah, it's after four or.
Is it four? I always thought it was five. Is it five?
Yeah, you can have a wood structure, it sounded like, but then. Um you know, a lot of things start.
Okay, yeah, and I'll I'll throw a caveat into that. That's for stick built as we only think of frame building, because once you start doing. Um laminated beam type stuff, it just goes way up and that's a kind of newer technology and. And so it doesn't necessarily, that's what I kind of want to take all this with a grain of salt, it's great stuff. And way too deep to necessarily need to get into, though I'd love to figure out what these these things mean, but it didn't have into. If you're an economics expert, a sensitivity analysis, because it's missing that, the thing, if this changes, how does that?
That's right.
One of these lines, if the land gets cheaper, land gets more expensive, if all those things thrown in there, how much does it throw these off? So and we've got a lot of places where it can be built on the side of a hill like the one on Route twelve. Where on the back side is a different height than the front side and that matters. So those can, those who can throw these off a lot in our favor.
Yeah, but you also have to consider, be concerned with the density. It it could really change the community if you start building really tall, big buildings. So you gotta take that into consideration too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a point.
Than just the finance part. Well, that's what we want the community to.
Yeah, no doubt.
Do you wanna be?
That's right.
The size, state annoying uh.
Yeah, but I think.
Environment versus.
What this was doing is to make sure we're not, we don't have something that makes it impossible to do the thing we wanna do.
Oh, yeah.
That's where this was getting.
Or if we're at that height that. Like, to me, whether it's seven, six or seven stories isn't like a huge change. But that the costs for a developer are market are not markedly different. You know, that there, that it's much more efficient for them to put that next floor on if they can, you know.
Right. And I I think in my conversations that I've had throughout the years and different commissions and and with. Even with like John Reiner, right, is we have a lot of regulations where we have these great ideas of what we wanna see and we're not seeing it happen. And I think part of it is. These considerations of what's the ROI and and that's a thing you hear a lot, right, is where we do want multifamily, we're not seeing those applications. Because it's too difficult for the ROI. And and I think of something like the Sealy School built. Right up on the hill next to mine and you get a lot of folks going, oh, my God, look at that monstrosity. I think that's only three or four stories, right? Um.
But I think Bill was saying.
Is it six? Oh, it is six, yeah. Okay, this is, it's big, yeah. Well, I think that it's, my point being that it's most notable because it is a pie on a hill. But I'm thinking about the city of Groton where they're having conversations about where that section on Bridge Street where the roller rink used to be.
Yeah.
Um I don't know.
Okay, let's.
Well, in this article, what this article says is, you know, you need to make considerations on your zoning, um or you you could be restricting yourself. Right? And I I and that's an argument that came up in that discussion. Um that I think that maybe we think of the topography a little bit more when we think of where we're zoning some of this, you know.
Yeah, I think though the Bill made the point that it wasn't just economics either. People in Connecticut don't seem to like it unless it gets. Over six stories.
Yeah, and I would just.
Made around the state. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, and and this in isolation, you know, there's building code, there are people looking at building code legislative session. I think there probably gonna be a single stair or something like that that gets proposed um. And so looking at this in isolation of if we just increase the height, things are gonna work there. I mean, there's other factors, right?
Yeah.
And um, yeah, I just think that's important to consider, right?
Yep.
Well, I think that you wanna have those uh considered beef, but you don't wanna turn people away. Because they look at something and say, I can't do what I wanna do or what I need to be able to do for the. And and because every parcel is, you know, the horizontal build or the vertical build could be different. You might have a combination of the two, but I think what I took from this is that you don't wanna be. Limit limiting someone from making a good decision.
Um the only thing I'm adding is or clarifying is that. It still might be limited.
Yeah, okay. No, that's reasonable, yeah, yeah. It's some in some other.
Okay, let's go on to the ASP report.
That was probably more conversation than you thought that was gonna generate.
More to come. Talk about the. Hey, questions or comments on the ASP? Okay, how about the application update?
Yeah, you've got two applications that. Are gonna be overdue by our next meeting.
Yeah, they're both gonna. They're both getting extensions, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
All right, thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clint.
I'll see y'all in person one of these days, promise. Take care, everybody.
Thankfully, you'll have to put on shoes to conduct these meetings.